I'd like to call the meeting of the District of Chatwin to order. Can I have the opening statement read, please?
As we gather today on the traditional territory of the Treaty Eight Nations to conduct the business of the District of Chatwin, we do so knowing that we are privileged to serve the citizens of this community and we shall endeavor to conduct our business in their best interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, prior to adoption of the agenda, is there any new business to bring forward? Counsel? You had mentioned--
Just in the reports.
Okay. Okay, then no new business, adoption of the agenda.
So move.
One second.
All those in favor? Agenda, carry. Minutes, the regular council meeting held on June 2nd, 2025. Any errors or omissions? Discussion. Not seen any? All those in favor? Carry. No delegations, bylaws? No bylaws? Committee reports? Regional district mayor-- Is it-- Just to mention the FCM, our Prime Minister, he was talking on the same level as any other premier in Canada, that we were to work together to exercise our right as a free and willing country. So that was one of the things, and it was to do with the housing that built Canada through Canadians. So that was his message, and it was plenty appropriate that he mentioned that. And after the meeting, usually he-- The Prime Minister will stay around at FCM for a few questions. This time, he had obligations to go to the premier's meeting in Saskatoon, so he was gone. So anyway, we didn't get the chance to question him, but if you had an opportunity, it was gone when he says he had to leave, so. Any other reports?
I did.
Okay. Counselor Hunt?
On Sunday, June 22nd, I attended the seasonal ground opening for the Little Curry Heritage Museum. Counselor Deck was also there, manning the barbecue. The four members are very busy getting ready for the season. It looks spotless. Memberships are on sale again for $10 per year, and there is still Little Curry history books available as well. They have a lot going on right now, so check out the Facebook page, Little Curry Heritage Museum, to keep updated on our events and our open hours.
Any questions? Any other reports? Administration? Okay, go ahead, CAO.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, I've got quite a lengthy one today. Don't know really how that looked out, but I'll get through it as quick as I can. So our patching crews have been actively tarring paving cracks and filling potholes, and contractors have begun building sidewalks and working on the summer capital projects. Capital projects are very carefully planned and grant funding helped us accomplish most of our goals. As an example, there's been some community interest lately in sidewalk placement. Sidewalks are part of our established active transportation plan, and we follow detailed criteria to be eligible for grant funding. The 2025 sidewalk is 70% grant-funded and provides safe access for our children walking to and from school and the Crown subway. We listen to resident feedback, and we study factors like traffic patterns and volume, pedestrian safety, seniors' access, and overall accessibility in place in sidewalks. As funds are always limited, we prioritize these projects to maximize the benefits to the largest number of residents. The Act of Transportation is annually-- is an annually reviewed living document, built in part through residents' feedback and is publicly displayed in venues like council meetings and trade shows. Past projects have provided or improved accessibility and safety for children, pedestrians, seniors, and residents for visitors with mobility challenges. Repairs are almost complete to the damage caused by our brief but intense flood triggered by the recent heavy rain event. Due to our past flood mitigation work, damage was minor, and our drainage system handled most of the water. Contractors are now working along the creek and keeping our local beaver population at healthy and sustainable levels to minimize any negative impacts they cause, while still keeping the many benefits this Keystone species brings to the valley. Excuse me. Crews continue to mow and trim the Chatwin boulevards. Sometimes there are delays in this process, and these are caused by things like conflicting priorities, special events, weather conditions, and employee absences or training. The boulevard on the south access, east of the main intersection, is a good example of the type of challenge that crews face. The boulevard here is too steep for mowers and can only be trimmed by hand before people are parked there for the day in order to avoid vehicle damage from rocks thrown by equipment. Crews carefully plan their work and address these types of issues very early in the morning. In the good old days, herbicide was king and was used in most public spaces, and this resulted in more of a weed-free classic lawn appearance in our parks, boulevards, and the cemetery. We now know that while herbicides do get rid of those ever-present dandelions and similar broadleaf weeds, they also cause many other health and environmental issues and have become a huge concern for many. While our boulevards may look a little rough at times, our pollinator children and pets are healthier. Every time we spray herbicide, we have concerned residents inquiring as to why we sprayed and what we used. Please note that we only use certified applicators to spray defined areas and noxious weeds as required by existing net legislation. This is all part of our changing world and is becoming increasingly commonplace. Many municipalities like Edmonton have reduced mowing to reduce costs and improve ecosystem health, and some communities have stopped mowing some areas altogether and are planting native grasses using more decorative rock and similar nature-scaping techniques. Due to the recent retirement of a longtime employee and regular staff turnover, we started with a six-person park crew this year with only two experienced workers trained on the zero-turn lawnmowers. We had one off for two weeks due to an injury and one homesick for part of a week. We are up to seven now with an additional new hire trained on the zero turn, bringing us to three trained operators. And we will have one more employee join in the soon. It's getting increasingly challenging to find these seasonal workers as the work is hard, people are often abusive to them, and there are a surprising number of hazards, everything from violence in the workplace, discarded needles and similar health hazards, machinery and weather, to name just a few. We hire local youth in general, and many return year after year. This does delay our spring start date a bit as we work around college schedules, but also benefits our community as a whole. We have helped many locals pay for university through summer labor and aquatics positions, as well as providing some technical training and continue to find these positions with grants when they are available. Crews start spring cleanup with the cemetery before starting in town as we strive to have it presentable for Mother's Day. In early June, we had the chainsaw carving championship, a major ball tournament, soccer, all in one weekend, and all the fields were ready for play. We have also started up the spray park, repaired playgrounds and infrastructure, and crews pick massive amounts of garbage every day, as well as patrolling spare park and removing graffiti from places like playgrounds and the spray park. They are also working in trails, identifying hazard trees for removal, planting and weeding flower beds, responding to resident concerns, organizing working at events, helping clean up after the recent flood, and so on. Longtime residents understand the impact of our northern climate on infrastructure. The freeze-thrott thaw cycle causes many issues like ground settling, frost heaves, potholes, sunken headstones, and damage to wooden components in our parks. We repair these problems in-house where possible, with contractors when necessary, and always as quickly as possible. The downtown core sidewalk is a perfect example of this. Had crews replaced the paving stones last fall where the new water service lines were installed, the normal settling on the excavations would have created a hazard and required repaving in the spring, effectively doing the job twice. Public work crews have maintained these spots with sand gravel to keep them safe and level, and the paving will be restored as soon as possible. Contractors prioritize this type of work, and this helps us to keep costs as low as possible. There will always be some inconvenience caused by community improvement projects like the recent downtown paving and water service replacement, and we will always strive to keep these as minimal as possible. We no longer enter contests like Communities in Bloom as they are extremely expensive, and we do not have the manpower, budget, or irrigation systems to make this work. We could be successful with two to four more seasonal employees and a corresponding increase in budget taxes. Many communities opted out of these contests as they do result in significant increases in expenditures. This is one of the effects we see with the can foreclosure, general state of forestry, the tax cap, and similar challenges that we face. There have been some concerns this year about the lack of flowers at Carver's Row. We did not plant as usual this year as we have a capital project that will result in a wider walkway and improved accessibility and water control. This work will likely impact the flower beds, and so it would have been a waste of money to plant flowers and remove them for construction. They will return in 2026. We are once again in a major drought, a level four until the rain in early June, and the weather is predicted to be very hot and dry for the rest of summer. This resulted in unsightly brown grass, highly visible weeds, and was unavoidable as we were not set up for irrigation. We have also heard comments about two employees riding around on a gator UTV during the day. Residents will always see two summer students functioning as a team, as this is our procedure. The primary reason for this is legislative work-safe B.C. requirements for employees working alone. Employee safety will always be our top priority, and we find this team approach to be more efficient as well. The driver of the gator will stop, the passenger will hop out to pick up litter if it's a small amount. They both hop out if there's much litter, if there's a heavy item. They cover a lot of ground in a day, remove a lot of garbage in the process, and remain safe while doing so. Many local businesses, leaders, and organizations continue to serve our community by investing in things like facade replacements, building renovations, hanging flower baskets, holiday lights and decorations, site cleanups, events, and similar volunteer improvements. Since 2014, 30 local businesses have participated in our facade improvement program. In this time of dramatically slumping volunteerism, these efforts are very much appreciated. In recent years, Chatwin has reduced the number of brown sites from a hive seventeen down to the current three, and this is due almost entirely to the contributions of local community leaders. Other businesses and developers are signaling interest in future projects, and while some of these have been delayed by external factors like the pandemic, soaring interest rates, and the increased tariffs, the community will continue to improve and grow over time. These projects are always highly confidential until the proponent wishes to announce them, and these details may not be publicly shared until then. So are beavers good or bad? Is a weed-free boulevard worth using the herbicide necessary to obtain it? Should we have larger park crews and plant more flowers? Are fireworks and Christmas lights a responsible use of tax dollars in a depressed economy? We are aware of the comments from both sides of the equation. We are always trying to find a right balance between economy, appearance, and services. I know that despite our best efforts, there will always be some dissatisfaction. Mayor and council, as advised by residents, may decide that the extra expense is what the community needs. We always follow their direction and can discuss financial impacts in future deliberations. I am extremely proud of the effort our people put in to make our community attractive, welcoming, safe, and truly hope that you are as well. Please remember that while we can always do more, it will require more staff, money, and taxes to achieve. Thank you.
Questions, councilors? Go in, Counselor Smith.
I have a question about our bylaw on-- whole bit of like yards or empty lots. I'm just wondering how that works. Is that like-- Does a bylaw enforcement officer do that, or is that something-- How does it work?
Well, there's several parts. If it's a residence and it's like an overgrown yard, usually that's complaint-driven for us to respond to it because we don't know if somebody's ill, if they're on holidays. We don't want to-- You know, we're not a community where if you're out there with a ruler, if you're more than an inch and seven, eight some grass, we're gonna give you a ticket. If it's a commercial space, then we go through a series of-- you know, letters from bylaw, warnings. Then it goes to the lawyers, and there's what's called a stop letter, and then we'll take care of it for them and bill them. A good example of that is the vacant lot by the Chatwin Court. That's in the final stages right now, but it's a time-consuming process. It takes a couple of months, and we give the owner every chance to address the issues before we have to address it for them. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have one. One of the things that was-- you brought up in the first paragraph was contractors working on the creek. Is that a local contractor? CAO, was that--
Yes. We use local contractors, I would think, 80% of the time. The Commotion Creek is down doing the machine work along the creek. There's a Soto gentleman that's talking about the beaver control issue. We hire local HVAC, local electricians, plumbers, carpenters. Does Cho, for instance, did the groundwork for the rec center last year. They're successful better for that. We don't-- Generally, the only time we don't use local is if we don't have the service locally. You know, architects, locksmiths, oddly enough. There's a few things that we have to go elsewhere for.
Paving?
Yeah, there's no paving company set up here in town. Paving-- I mean, like, the paving crews is like a rodeo circuit. They go from community to community, and they pave a bunch.
And one other question on the zero-- Zero-turn equipment there. What is the normal amount of employees trained? If it wasn't this year, kind of in the previous years, how many employees did you have trained on that zero turn?
Normally, we like to have-- You know, it depends on how many new people, but normally we'll have five or six that are trained. This year, because of turnover, again, we had, you know, like Audra retiring, so we had quite a setback at the start of the year.
Thank you. Counselor Deck?
In regards to the public works students, are we going to the high school to visit the grade 12s and see if any of them are interested in putting a little blurb there or something?
Absolutely. For rec center and for public works, we do-- We have little posters and brochures we put up in high schools. We do a lot-- I would think because it's a small town, our single best promoter is word of mouth because, you know, we have-- We've put a lot of sibling groups through aquatics for us. You know, one of our local lap techs at the hospital started out as a part-time worker, and we helped pay for her university by giving her that appointment, and she came back to our community and helps us with her health care provision, which is a, you know, sterling example of how good it is. We train-- We've trained a lot of power engineers that ended up in industry locally, helped them get their tickets while they helped us at the rec center. Equipment operators at public works, you know, labors, you know, that's allow a lot of equipment operators to get their start. We do advertise at trade shows and stuff, and we do advertise through the college and through the schools and through Word of Mouth.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, motion to accept the reports?
Someone--
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Carry. And we have-- We have one discussion item. Invite from the Taylor Gold Panning Committee. World Invitation Class A Gold Panning Championship at East Island Park in Taylor, B.C., August 3rd-- I mean, 1st to the 3rd, 2025.
I'll make that recommendation that council authorize the mayor to alternate to attend the World Invitational Class A Gold Plant Panning Championships in Taylor, B.C., August 1st to 3rd, 2025.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Carry. Who's the alternate? No. Correspondence. C1, letter from the Minister of Transportation and Transit dated June 11th. Okay, yeah, let's do that again. Letter from the Minister of Transportation and Transit dated June 11th, 2025. Highway 97, safety.
So they could make a motion to pull C1 and accept C2 to C6?
One second.
Any discussion? Any more to be polled? Okay. Okay, let's-- All those in favor? Carry. Okay, C1. Go ahead, Counselor.
It seems like a bit of a brush-off. I think this is a pretty dear-to-everybody's heart around here, and this just seems a bit of a brush-off.
Okay. Right now, I'm gonna read the letter from-- It's from our Minister of Transportation. So-- When we lose people to traffic incidents, it comes to our attention and is brought to us, and we feel for families in our community and surrounding area. It's not something that we take lightly, and we do not advocate for unsafe items or things that are brought forward in this letter. So I'm just gonna read this letter, and we'll continue the discussion. Thank you for your letter on April 10th, 2025, regarding the safety along Highway 97 east of Chatwin near Wobbie Hill. That's a pullout on top of the hill east of Chatwin. Safety is the ministry's highest priority, and I appreciate the opportunity to review your concerns. Ministry's traffic engineer has reviewed the section of Highway 97 near Wobbie Hill several times over the past several years to assess safety at this location. They found that the existing highway meets safety standards and that no changes to the roadway are warranted at this time. They did observe motorists speeding along the stretch of highway and suggest that increased enforcement may help improve driving behavior at this location. I have shared your email with local staff who meet regularly with the RCMP to discuss traffic issues on the highway. If you have not already done so, you may also want to contact your local RCMP detachment to suggest increased enforcement. As well, I have also shared your email with my colleagues, the Honorable Gary Berg, Minister of Public Safety and Solicitor General, as his ministry oversees police and law enforcement. Regarding your comments about the lane marking along this stretch of highway, the ministry repaints center and lane lines on most main highways and connectors-- connecting roads annually, considering factors such as wear, location, and traffic volumes. Line painting along Highway 97 will take place this spring. This ministry is also installing center lines, rumble strips along the section of highway near Wobbie Hill this year for enhanced safety at this location. Do you have any more comments, Counselor Deck?
Nope, that was about it.
Okay. Any other councilors, if any? Go ahead, Counselor McDonald.
I agree with Counselor Deck. I feel like they're passing the buck a little bit, and I didn't know that even with increased enforcement from the RCMP detachment, they can't be out there 100% of the time monitoring a section of highway. There's-- I recently drove past this section and paid attention to the line markings, and they aren't already wearing it. I'm not sure exactly when they painted, but they're already worn.
Okay. My concern is that when you have incidents that happen on the public highway and you have two lanes, and then there seems to be a third lane as you're coming from the east to Chatwin, that's a road pullout for trucks. For either-- They're stopping, they have to by law to stop there, and when you have a vehicle following behind, they continue to follow that truck right into the-- to the stop, and sometimes they have-- They've been bumped a few times. But this is the problem that the local business that is right at Wobbie Hill had sent out concerns, and they had been told, "Are you an engineer?" Now, that's what they were told about the road and the safety. So this being part of the safety right at the beginning, "Safety is the ministry's highest priority." I say bullshit. And that's something that most people should be taking into account when we lose people on that hill. And it's tough to swallow when somebody tells me that, "Oh, we will get more enforcement than the RCMP." And who are they to tell us that roads-- The people on the roads are speeding? Do they have radar gun? Do they have any means of saying that somebody's speeding on that hill? They're another BS thing. So anyway, my concern is that we're going to send a follow-up letter with some of the stuff, and I encourage our residents to send letters to the ministry and to saying that this is what we feel. And it's a-- I am not an engineer. I don't claim to be an engineer, but I do know a little bit about what safety is. Safety is keeping people alive, keeping people on the road. And in that instance, coming from Dawson Creek, if they stop the double lane about 100 meters, 200 meters down to the east, then it becomes a single lane, and then the pullout becomes visible. It seems like you're at the pullout. There is no pullout until you go past it, and then the truck is stopped. Then you know it's a pullout. So that's just something that kind of bothers me with the letter from the safety. It's our highest priority. Any other--
Are you asking me to write a letter to Minister Farnsworth? Do you want me to do a follow-up letter? Is that what I'm hearing from Aaron?
Yes, and I'd just like to make one other statement that is my opinion. Just to make that clear. Yes, CAO.
I'll send-- I'll send you a draft in the next year or so for mayor and council to include.
Thank you. All right.
Motion to receive C1.
One second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Carry. Information items. Anything to be polled, councilors?
Motion to leave I-123. One second.
Okay, all those in favor? Carry. Okay, reports for action. RA1, ratification of e-mail poll, Chatwin, 2025, Union of B.C. Municipals Resolution. Go ahead, Counselor Smith. Counselor Smith?
I'll make the recommendation that council ratify the resolution adopted by e-mail poll on June 4th, 2025, to submit the resolution, RE Provision of Free Adrenaline Auto Injectors to UBCO.
Second.
Third.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Carry. RA2, ratification of e-mail poll, Chatwin Search and Rescue Letter of Support. I just got one-- Okay, go ahead. Just got a question here. I believe we do not have forum?
Yes, we still have--
With me?
We're good.
With me? Okay. Okay. All right. Counselor Smith? Go ahead.
I'll make the recommendation that council ratify the resolution adopted by e-mail poll on June 11th, 2025, to provide a letter of support to Chatwin Search and Rescue for a grant application to the Lakeview Credit Union Community Social Responsibility Fund Committee at the Dawson Creek branch.
Sir.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Carry. RA3, ratification of e-mail poll, Boulevard Walkway Trails.
I make that recommendation that council ratify the e-mail poll conducted on June 16th, 2025, to approve the award of the contract to Parallel Projects Incorporated for-- 2025 to approve the award of the contract to Parallel Projects Incorporated for $47,682.92, GST included, for the walkway trail projected, project located along South Access Boulevard to 51st Street or 51st Way Northeast, 51st Street Way Northeast.
I thought you were done. Second.
Okay, any questions, councillor Hunn?
Yeah, I'm just curious, this is not a local company that we're doing this and is that right?
This is where it kind of depends on your definition of local, they're Dawson Creek, they're the ones that did our downtown core, they're, they have workers that are local, they have seasonal employees here, but are they, is their head office based in Chetman? No. They were however, the low bid.
Okay, so some of the people that work there are Chetman residents?
Yes.
Okay, and we don't have an actual Chetman company that does this?
Well, it's, it's, it's walkways and ground prep for sidewalks. We have, like, does show has been successful on some, but they worked a little bit. As you know, Mayor and Council policy is, is that we can do a 10% premium for local and we follow that. Parallel, because they have their equipment already here for another project, they came in at, at $48,000 roughly on a $70,000 job, so save the taxpayers $20,000 basically. And, and the next bids were considerably higher, so.
Okay, good, I just wanted to.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Councillor Smith?
I just wanted to clarify, this doesn't, this particular sidewalk isn't, didn't have any grants attached to it?
No, this one doesn't. It's a continuation of the walkway, it comes out, it does show, then over to Spirit Park along the South Access.
Okay.
Okay, anymore? Okay, all those in favor? RA4, Chetman and District Recreational Complex Operating Agreement.
I'll make the motion that the District of Chetman Council approve the draft Chetman District Recreation Complex Operating Agreement, which defines the roles of the Regional District District of Chetman and the Chetman Civic Properties Commission for management and operation of the Chetman District Recreation Complex. Second.
Yeah, any discussion? Councillor McDonald?
Is there any changes in the last agreement?
There really isn't an operating agreement. What, what there was, was originally there was an agreement to, for us to operate it, but it was just basically that was all it was. It was, it was like two pages and it had how much we would increase every year, which is a very modest 2% on, on handling charges basically. But it's grown, you know, new libraries, water spray parks, new responsibilities. So this is, this is a, I sent the first draft of this to Peace River Regional District almost seven years ago. That's how long it's been in, in the works. It's gone back and forth through several sets of lawyers and staff and everything else. There's no financial implications, there's no financial changes, it just clearly defines who does what, basically.
So we've been operating under this agreement for some time, it's just now a paper form?
We've been just operating kind of as we go, like the Civic Properties Commission, because it has representation for both the Regional District and the District of Chetman, has provided kind of that oversight, the policy building and the governance and, and that's really helped us. But, but when we come down to say disposing of, of old equipment, like who do we follow? Do we follow the Regional District or the District of Chetman? And at what level do we have to go back to commission for approval? So it gets really complex and this just gives us a level playing field. It's basically, it's, it's, this is all good faith stuff and it's basically what we have been doing, but this is formal and, and this stipulates legally what it is that everybody does. We've worked it out in the past and now we don't have to do that anymore. We, everybody understands the rules.
So we're waiving the Chetman purchasing policy to the PRD's potential asset policy. You said that there's no financial allocation, so this is just in the event that it's necessary, we just put our policy to the side and operate under that policy because it takes higher priority?
If it came to, if, if there was a difference in purchasing policies, we would, we would aggregate to theirs because it's their property. Anything that we spend, like if, if we do maintenance work or whatever, we invoice them and we get reimbursed for it. So that's why I say there's no financial implications and, and really, the end of the day, their purchasing policy is very similar to ours. This came out in like really strange ways, like spraying for noxious weeds, like, like the Regional District has a very defined system for that, as do we. It's in our district boundaries and it impacts our neighbors, so we have more of a say on when and where and how it gets sprayed than the Regional District would normally allow because it's a reasonable compromise. And everything in this document is, is, in the opinion of staff and legal teams, a reasonable compromise.
Thank you.
Any others? So just comment the paving that's going on right now? Is that PRD or is that under this agreement?
The paving that's going on right now is the Regional District project. It was, it was part of a capital plan. I first built the phases of it five years ago when I was done at the rec center. Robbins carried on the good work and, and this is the final stage. We waited for the demolition of the old library and that's where it gets a little murky because the old library was kind of ours, but we've, we're paving it to provide that extra paving for all of our people to come to the rec center. Because that's always, any event, that's all you hear is, we need more parking.
Okay, so many parking spots, we're going to gain?
With the, with the new one this year, 27, I believe, extra parking spots. With the one last year, it was almost 50, but we lost another 10 with where the library is, so all in all, we get another like 70 parking spots overall. And it fixes a lot of drainage issues, so that, this helps the District of Chetman as well, because it gets that water away from residences and down to the creek where we want it to be.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, all those in favor? RA5, new fire hall grant.
I'll make the motion that council look at the application to the union and see whether the priority is mine for the new fire hall.
Second.
Discussion. Councillor Deck?
So would we be going for the full $7 million?
This is really exciting. We've been told that we can get up to $7 million and that we tick all the boxes. There is a long line of people that want to dip into the same pot of money, but right now, you know, we're hoping. Obviously, we need to get pretty close to the $7 million for the project to be feasible to begin with, as we've said all along. So we're hope, we're trying for the $7 million, we're applying for the $7 million.
My next question was, where are we going to get the other $2 million? What grant are we going to get the other $2 million from?
Get it out of our reserves. We have $2 million and we set aside for it right now.
Okay.
What other grant?
Yeah, let's not use our money.
Well, some of the grants are not stackable, but we've already been talking to other, other grant people about things that might not be included as the fire hall, like, you know, maybe additional paving, maybe additional equipment, you know, new hoses, whatever. So we are, like, we are always exploring grants for, for anything.
Back.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor?
Cross with a person.
Yeah, yeah, it's not for sure, right? It's just 2026 comes along and they send us some money, that'd be awesome. Anyway, it's Carrie. RA6, budget amendment.
I'll make the motion that the 2025 financial plan be ready as follows, the P D E years before $10,000 funded from the Building Reserve, Fire Department $10,000 funded from Circle Block, the District Office H back $50,000 funded from the Hyman Action Reserve, computer upgrading $20,000 funded from Finance Reserve, insurance claims $10,000 funded from the Buildings Reserve, lot streaming meetings $8,500 funded from the PRD Reserve. Second.
Any discussion? We'll go councillor Hunn and McDonald.
So does this mean we're going to start live streaming soon?
Once budget is approved, then I will reach out to the nice folks at Peace of Adam and start getting the wheels in motion. I don't know if I'd be ready for the next meeting, but I'll be ready as soon as we can all make it happen.
Okay.
Councillor McDonald and Deck.
Can you elaborate on the issue?
No, I can't, but our financial, I'm getting hoarse, I'm talking about you and my tie's too tight, so I'm going to take a breather.
We had two incidents over the past, we had a water break at the museum and then caused some flooding, so there was some building damage and stuff done there. And we had a small breach with the wall of the fire hall that caused the asbestos leak and so there was some contamination cleanup and all that kind of stuff there.
So is this?
Ben Hunn, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Sorry, so was this like just the cost of fixing or this was like, like deductible or?
Yeah, it's basically deductibles, as I understand it.
This is the deductible portion, yes.
The, the asbestos leak sounds a bit more terrifying than it actually is. There's block walls that make it like insulation, which is like a pebbly material, looks like little styrofoam pellets almost, and it contains asbestos. And there was a building shift, the block wall cracked and there was, you know, basically about this much on the floor. And so you have to bring in, you have to, because it's hazardous materials, you bring in work safe, you bring in a contamination crew, everything is disposed of correctly, anything that came into contact with is disposed of. So there was fire gear, there was hoses, there was stuff that we had to either get professionally cleaned or, or replaced to conform to the legislation. We did wet tests and, and surface tests and air tests throughout the entire facility and we come in way below acceptable thresholds, so we're still fine and I stress that, but it was, it was an area that we needed to be super cautious with.
Councillor Deck?
We're going, live streaming services, that's for equipment and so on, I, I trust the check radio will be involved in the purchase of what I'm like the actual what they're getting, because I don't have a lot of faith in the equipment we have now with the streaming and so on we're supposed to have.
I think we'll see a good end result from this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The question was, is the radio?
Yeah, there, that was what, sorry, I wasn't clear enough. That, I came to council when we first talked about it and they're supplying the equipment and everything, they'll make sure it works. You'll notice our equipment is all working better now too. We brought in a new contractor for repair and maintenance and we're getting a much better result.
Thank you. Okay.
So when we do the live stream, and I'm sure we've talked about this, does this mean that people at home could ask questions or they have to be still present and they could just watch?
Yes, their chat, chat functions would be disabled. We don't have the staff to go through and, and answer questions while we're, while we're focusing on answering your questions. Residents can always email us, they can phone us, they can come as a delegation, there's all kinds of ways to get their concerns heard. So there's still all of that, but, but a chat function, I'm not really aware of any local government that's successfully done chat on a live stream. It, it just, it can really spiral quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anymore? Good? Okay, all those in favor? RA7, 2025 youth leadership scholarship.
I'll make the recommendation that the 2025 Youth Leadership Scholarship be awarded to Ethan Nelson, subject to the verification of enrollment in both secondary programs.
I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor? RA8, 2026 B C Natural Resource Forum registration.
I'll make the motion that all members of council be authorized to be registered in 2026, the National Resources Forum to be held in Prince George, B C, January 18th to 22nd, 2026. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? RA9, facade improvement application.
I'll make the recommendation that council authorize the facade improvement program application for 1176670 B C Limited, The Dollar Store with More, address 5024 50th Avenue Northwest, Chetman, B C, and authorize the mayor corporate officer to execute a partnering agreement with 1176670 B C Limited, The Dollar Store with More, address 5024 50th Avenue Northwest, Chetman, B C, and approve the issuance of development permit number 04-2025 to 1176670 B C Limited, The Dollar Store with More, address 5024 50th Avenue Northwest, Lot G, District Lot 398, Peace River District Plan 14254, PID 012-170-877.
Nice. Who the heck is the chair?
I'm going to drink. Yeah. Easy for you.
Okay.
You're reading.
Discussion, councillor McDonald?
I'm really happy to see this, I think this will look very nice on top.
Councillor Smith?
Is this our last one that we have available?
That is our last one for this year, yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
I'll make the recommendation that.
No, you did those, eh?
R11.
Pardon? Yep, yep. Go ahead councillor.
I'll make the recommendation to check register for the month of May 2025 totaling the $752,901.21 being received.
Second.
Okay, any questions?
Yep.
Councillor Deck and then McDonald.
Sounds good.
Go ahead councillor Deck.
Oh, Jock's Restoration, I'm assuming that's the, what you call it, a fire hall?
No, that's for the museum.
The museum plug, okay.
And then, that's it.
Councillor McDonald?
Thank you.
I'm just curious about protecting Lakeside Resort and I'm assuming staff travel for a purpose?
Yeah, there would have been a conference there with one of the staff members for, I'm not sure if that can, which one?
I think there was, I'm not, wasn't it Ellen for that grant?
Actually, that one is, is, it was interesting because unlike most grants, this federal grant actually had a two-day workshop on how to successfully, or one-day workshop on how to successfully apply for this grant. So I sent Ellen down for it to, to get a head start and meet everybody and, and that gave us a leg, leg up from the competition kind of thing.
My question.
Councillor Smith?
I have a question, Orchids and Moonlight for 1062.
That was the recognition of professional state.
Professional state?
Yeah.
Like gifts?
I think so, yeah. You know Kevin? Give him a try.
that we have presented today, you may, at this time, ask a question. State your name and address, please. Do you just want to push it out this time?
Please, Archer, we're five hundred and thirty-four seventh Ave. I was just wondering about May twenty-sixth, I see quite a few churches for restaurants, does this fall under like the birthday participating or the birthday participating? Is there also for this?
May twenty-sixth?
Restaurants, I mean, twelve to birthdays.
That was actually the community cleanup day, the litter pickup. We, we do, like, people can get a Subway sandwich and a drink for picking litter for the day.
And that's, sorry, that's for anyone in the community?
Anybody that registered and participated, so we had, we had a lot of volunteers. We had some companies that donated like barbecue stuff and did hamburgers and hot dogs, done at Carver's Row as well, and then if people couldn't attend that, they could get, I think it was six inch sub and a drink.
Anyone who lives in Dawson is that late, family restaurant in Dawson?
That one I'm not sure about. I'm not sure Lee's family is in Dawson, but somebody was working. If, if, if we go to, say Dawson Creek on a part run, because it's cheaper than freight, there's a, under the collective agreement, the employee can, you know, get reimbursed for mileage if they're in their personal vehicle, get reimbursed for a meal if it's, if it's a travel situation.
And I was just wondering, so that wasn't the word, the PRD actually owned the rec center? So is that project, is it entirely funded by the PRD or does the District of Chetlin provide funds as well for that?
We provided, did we provide something there? Do you remember? No, no, there was, there was one part of it where we were talking about it, but I don't think we ever actually did. The, all the rec center grounds are owned by the Peace River Regional District, that includes the library. Like when people talk about, you know, the library project, that was actually the Peace River Regional District that funded that, but the District of Chetlin did contribute to that. If you talk about the water spray park, I was able to get grant funding for most of that while I was done at the rec center. It's, it gets kind of murky and that's one of the reasons why we're doing the operating agreement, is because there's a lot of different ores in the water. But this particular part of the paving project is all funded by the Regional District, it's completely their project, it's out of their, out of their reserves and their surplus.
And then in the amendment to the financial plan, it's just here is, let alone accurate that.
Was it maybe the P R A? The P R A is Peace River Agreement, it replaced the Fair Share Agreement, it's how the province sends back to local governments like us, some of the money that we should have maybe gone to tax from industry in a sense, but because they're outside of our boundaries, the tax goes to the province, goes to Victoria, and then each, each community gets a percentage of it back for, to help with wear and tear and infrastructure, roads, you know, all the industrial traffic on our streets and everything, and, and that's Peace River Agreement.
Any other public, any questions on the agenda? Not hearing any, adjourn me.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Third.
Okay.[1457.12]